Hey, welcome everyone. We were in executive session to discuss the employment history of several individuals where no action was taken, so we're going to move right into our regular meeting. Thank you all for coming this evening. Just want to remind everyone that the upcoming Board of Ed meeting is Tuesday, November 6th, at 7:00 PM here, and the workshop meeting will be held on Monday, November 19th at 7:00 PM here due to the recess, Thanksgiving recess, we're doing this a little early.
Laura, Tuesday's November 6th is Election Day? I had written down that we changed it to the 5th, could that be right?
I don't recall. I remember we moved the November 19th.
That's the one we moved.
We moved the 19th.
So, we're having it on Election Day?
Yes. There's no elections happening here at the building or anything, is it?
Correct. It's offsite.
Yeah. Do you think it's a problem?
No, I just had changed it in my book, so I know we talked about it.
We talked about the Veterans Day one.
The Veterans Day one, right?
And the 19th, the 20th, we changed. I don't, I can go back and look.
Okay, I can put it back on the 5th, it's 6th, if nobody has a problem with it, I just wanted to check.
I'm good.
Okay, perfect. With that said, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Banante.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. I want to start with an important piece of business. This is School Boards Recognition Week, and I'd like to read to the community members who are here and also to the board, part of the proclamation that Governor Cuomo released in recognition of your service to our community, reminding that our school, local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating with the needs of the school district and the public and the public's expectations to the district by working closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we all hold for today's students and those in the future. So with that, I couldn't think, as part of this proclamation, of any one part that resonated more with me when thinking about the Haldane School Board than that piece just there. So, I'd ask, we do have a small gift for you, so there should have been a bag around your chair, and we're going to make you open it here in front of everybody. Yep, you all got the same thing, so you have to open it at the same time. So you'll notice you have a nice scarf. Yes, it's getting cold around, so we got a scarf for you with the Haldane logo, yep.
Where's Waldo?
It's kind of like a Hogwarts tie or scarf as well, or a Waldo tie, yep, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Ann and I have been knitting these for weeks.
I'm sure.
Looks great on John. You don't have to wear it now. But really, on behalf of our school community, our administration, our teaching staff, our related service staff, we wanted to thank you all for your service to our school system. We will have an opportunity after the first public comment section, we also have some cake and some light refreshments next door, everybody's welcome to join us. We'll go through this first part, and then we'll, if it's okay, Ms. Hammond, we'll pause the meeting for some cake, and then we'll come back and finish our business agenda.
Sure thing.
Okay, so we'll go through some things now, and then we'll get to that, but thank you. Just another update or two, I may go out of order. I did want to take an opportunity now, because he does not have a report listed, but just to welcome Mr. Nabil Botros, who's our new Director of Facilities and Transportation. Hi, Nabil. Nabil has been with us for about two weeks now and has already had quite a positive impact on our school community. Nabil comes from, his last position was as Director of Facilities in the Harborfields School District in Long Island. He was also with the Roslin School District as well on Long Island. He brings a wealth of experience to our school district, and it's been a pleasure to have him as part of our team for the last couple of weeks or so. And Nabil, if you'd like to say a few words, that mic, I think, is on? This one right up here, yep.
Thank you, I'd just like to...
Yeah, we want to get you on record.
I'd just like to thank the board for approving my appointment, and I'd like to say that I'm here to support Dr. Banante and Ann and the administration. You know, we have a very important function we provide, and I'm, it's not just providing it as it is, but always looking for improvement. So, I'm really happy to be here, it's a really wonderful place, and everyone I've met has made me feel very welcome, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome.
Pleasure. Additionally, yep, Ms. Sniffen, I'm going to turn some things over to you as part of your comments, which we're going to start a little early, we have a couple of students we wanted to recognize this evening and also be able to get them home, because they have school tomorrow, so Ms. Sniffen, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
And some of them need to get back up to Mrs. Mechalakis, who's waiting for them onstage as Romeo. So, I just would like to take this opportunity, these three young, fine men who are in front of us today have achieved tremendous academic success. But before I talk about that, I have to tell you that we have three incredibly mature, kind, and respectful students in front of us right now, above and beyond any academic accolades I could ever give them. They are three amazing young men, and I'm super proud of them, super proud of being able to watch them grow from when all three of them were in kindergarten. It's been great. With that said, two of the students in front of us today have received the National Merit Scholarship Award, a letter of commendation to Theodore Bates and Justin Rothman in recognition of their outstanding performance on the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test in 2017. We congratulate both of them with a certificate. So, Justin? And our final student, congratulations to Stefan Linsen for exceptional performance on the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test in 2017. The National Merit Scholarship Program is advancing Stefan as a semifinalist. He is now one of only 1,600 high school seniors eligible for a National Merit Scholarship Award, which will be presented in the spring of 2019. So Stefan, congratulations. So, thank you guys for coming, you, I'm sure, are more than welcome to say for the remainder of the board meeting, or go be Romeo, or go home and continue to study, but thanks again for coming, and thank you to the Bates family who is here tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Exit stage left. Okay, thank you, Ms. Sniffen, congratulations, guys.
Hope to do homework.
We understand. All right. A few other items, I wanted to just provide the board and our community members just with an update with respect to communications. As I've come into the district, obviously, I've learned and heard how important it is to have strong communication systems in place throughout our district, and that's something, I think, one of our third goal is related to that, and evaluating the systems and structures that are currently in place for that. That being said, the beginning of the school year is a time of incredible activity, and I was at a PTA meeting last week, could have been this week, no, it was last week, thank you, the days are starting to blend. And at our PTA meeting, we were discussing, you know, what's going on with the door and the SPO, scholarship, other items related to health and safety of students that I realize we probably should put an update out to the community as a whole, letting them know what the current status is of each of those project areas. I did have a meeting with the Safety Committee yesterday, and I did make sure I provided a report to them on the status of, I think there were four items that were being discussed as part of the budget process last school year, so I will be sure to put that out to the community in the coming week to provide an update on each of those areas, because I know it was a significant level of dialogue and conversation that occurred around a few key areas last year, that community members as they're coming into the school are wondering, you know, where's the SPO? Or, did we ever get that scholarship thing for when I come into the school? And I want to be able to, obviously, keep everyone well informed of the status of those things, so. I know we've discussed some of those as we've gone along, or maybe I've included it in a Friday report, but it's important for all of our parents to be up to speed on that, and I'll make sure I put a communication out shortly.
So, John, there's one for the books for Goal Three.
There you go.
Well, all right, you know, open it up, I'm going to ask a question.
Open it, go.
So, that was a smart reactive realization to issues that are outstanding. How do you think we can be better about anticipating? I see a lot of emails coming from the school about what's going on in the school, just calendar, how do you, I know you're not there yet, but where should we, how should we think about that?
So, I think what's important is, I'm never going to know what's percolating in the community all the time. But I, one idea is to put a structure in place, and I have a meeting with someone from Bosie's on this, to identify various individuals throughout the community to serve potentially as key communicators, where we essentially establish an understanding that as you're hearing things in the community, that maybe we're not addressing through our regular communications with the school to reach out to me directly, so we're empowering those individuals to open up that line of communication. And likewise, it's two ways, where I may have thoughts or perspectives that I'm kind of checking out, but we have routine meetings set up, so we can be well attuned to what the sentiment is in the community, what there's questions regarding, what thoughts are maybe we sitting with as a school community, that we're thinking of presenting to the community and having a process in place for that communication going both ways, which may lead to further communications. This one, I honestly think, just not being fully attuned to, and here, last year, those are things that I think I personally would have just naturally provided an update on if there's things like that in the future, just because I'll know it's a community value, I will have lived the experience of the budget process and know that it's important to intuit a little bit better, or more readily, what the community is going to want to hear about and what's important to it. I'm still learning that, so, you know, and this is one, you know, I'm sitting with and making sure we anticipate it going down the road, and I think the more time I spend here, the better I'm getting at anticipating those things.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, does that answer your question?
Yep, absolutely.
I do think there'll be other systems and structures, the key communicator one is just one I'm sitting with right now, that I think will go a long way to help me, both ways. Any other questions? Third piece here, the final piece of my remarks, the Director of Pupil Personnel Hiring Process is about to commence, and we had the online application system open for approximately one month, that closed yesterday, and I was reviewing the applicants today. We have a process articulated internally for how various members will participate in the process, and we're beginning to reach out to internal community members, teacher, staff members to be a part of the interview process. But the one outstanding thing is I don't currently have the board sitting in any particular spot through that interview process. In my previous role, we would not, larger school district, we did not necessarily have the board directly involved. It's my understanding here, the board was involved at some point, so I just think I need to understand and know how the board would like to be involved in the process, if at all, and if so, at what point, just so I can make sure that's incorporated into the process, begin to secure dates with you before we start setting up the calendar for how we're going to go about this, and if the board is going to participate, who specifically? Because I'd imagine not everybody would be readily available, but everyone maybe. So, if we can talk through that and what your expectations are, and come to some agreement on that, then I'll go ahead and set it up.
So, the way I had explained to Dr. Banante, excuse me, that it's been done in the past, is that we set up these committees, and usually, one of us or two of us are on those committees, particularly with the administrative positions. We're not talking about teacher hiring necessarily all the time, where, but we were involved as a board, and although that may have looked different for Dr. Banante, where he came from, we should decide what we want to do, continue to move forward, and so Dr. Banante can know where we stand as well.
I also, I also feel like there's been a difference between principal hiring and PPS director hiring, and I don't know that there should be, or there shouldn't be, but with the principal hiring, the full board saw all the top three finalists. But with the PPS hiring, there was two of us in the committee, and I don't, I don't know, I was thinking through this, and I, to me, the PPS director is kind of equal to a principal in terms of their role at our school and their importance at our school. So I don't, I don't know that they should be different processes, processes. So I feel like as we talk this through, we should also keep that in mind, and I don't know how you feel about this, but that we should be considering the board's role in the hiring of the principals kind of simultaneously, just, I'm kind of thinking of them as the same degree of importance.
I would certainly put them in the same category, yes, of importance, and so I would, I would agree.
Yeah.
They're equally important.
So I think that's what we did, right? The whole board saw the top three candidates.
Do we want to continue to see the top three candidates, or do we trust there's a difference between governance and management, where Dr. Banante acts as the management, and upon his recommendation, we meet the finalists or finalist? This is, I know we've been much more involved in the past, do we want to continue to do that?
It's tricky, because here's the thing, when a person, like a parent, says to you, "Hey, what do you think of the new PPS director?", I really don't want to say, "I have no idea, I haven't met him, but Phil says he's great." I don't want that to have to be my answer, I, maybe that should be my answer, but until now, I've been able to say, "Oh, he's this, he's that, he's going to do this," and kind of help, you know, share these leaders with our community in a positive way.
Which doesn't, which doesn't necessarily mean that we need to be on the hiring committee, right? Because we could aggressively meet the people who are the finalists and get hired, and still share the...
Right, well, it could be, it could be that, because the finalists are typically the top two or the top three, and those are the people who are brought to the committee. The committee doesn't see everybody. The committee sees whomever Phil decides are the top two and the top three.
Yeah, I meant, do you see the top two or top three, or just the last one?
So, that could be, that could be a choice, where whoever the choice, the committee chooses, then maybe that person meets with the board as like their final step before they're approved? I don't know.
So, Dr. Banante and I talked a little bit more in-depth about this, because it would be a culture shift, right? We talked about cultures and how things have been done here, and what does that look like moving forward? And he brought up a good point, and he said, "Laura, when you're hiring for your business..."
You're going to use this one.
And it actually made a lot of sense to me, like, do we necessarily know as a board what's required of the PPS director? Yes, we know he should know 200A regs, but what else?
Yeah, which I think we just want to work towards an understanding of that, if the board's going to be involved, of what that looks like at that point. So there's two or three candidates that the board has an opportunity to meet, by that point, they will have met with a group of our parents, they will have met with a group of our staff members, students may have been involved in that and shared their perspective there, of which, and they will have met with our administrative team, of which I, you know, will have been attuned, pretty closely attuned to, and I'll be candid with the board there about what the perspective has been, you know, as these candidates have come forward. But, you know, I think the board's insight is valuable, but I just want to make sure there's, there's a balance there, right, between the perspective that the parents and the students and admin team are providing all along as well. I would advocate, and I think I'm going there already in my remarks, that the board, as opposed to having, being a part of the parent committee, because you happen to be a parent, that the board have the, if they're going to meet with two or three finalists, that they do it separately, similar to what it was like the principal process was. I would say that's probably a better way than trying to integrate board members into specific groups that are meeting with the candidate all along.
Can you speak just a little bit about what the role of the faculty-staff, the faculty-staff, parent, and administrators committees will be in informing the opportunity? I guess, actually, I'm a little confused looking at what we have, and I know the public doesn't have it, that you're going to establish interview committees, one will be faculty-staff, one will be parents, one will be administrators. You'll conduct screening interviews. I think it's fine for me to be reading this out loud.
Yeah, that's...
And then this, and then you'll conduct those, and then the screened candidates, I assume a subset, a two to three finalists will meet with the committees. And then what will the role be of the committees then, in helping you then make the decision to bring that individual to the board? That's the piece I'd like to clarify.
I think we're just a little off in terms of numbers, so my assumption is I'd be bringing probably five or six.
Five or six?
To the committees.
Okay.
And that we would whittle that down to two or three, and then at those two or three, they'd be meeting with me, and then potentially meeting with the board. So I actually envision bringing more candidates to the committee, to the committee structure, not a group of two or three, a group of five or six. And just having reviewed the applicants today quickly, I didn't sit with it for a tremendous amount of time, but the individuals who are going to be screened, I think five or six is realistic, if not, maybe one or two more.
And so you'll put in place a process for them to provide feedback on each interview, on each interviewee, that you'll then consider to make your decision about interviewing the finalists, which will be a more in-depth interview with you.
Right, so I'm screening 15 with the hopes of getting that down to five, six, seven, you know, there's a lot of parity, just on paper, so, I don't know. Those individuals will meet with the committees, and then those committees will work with me to get that group down to two or three finalists, for my consideration and for the board's opportunity to meet, if the board's meeting with them.
And I think that's what's different in the process and the conversation that, and I said, sometimes we only had two or three initially.
Got it.
So we were more involved, but it was only two or three. And I think we had, I explained this to you.
I think there's going to be a few more, given what I've seen right now.
One of the things I often try...
Better worthy of consideration.
Gotcha. One of the things I often try to do in helping me understand, especially being a member of such a small community for such a long time, one of the things I often try to do to help me think about, okay, so what is my role as a board member? I think, okay, so what if I was on the board of LAUSD, right? No, seriously, like, what if we were on the board of a really big school district? What would be, we'd be expected to do? Now then, I also want to acknowledge that the beauty of being on the board in a place like Cold Spring is that you are much closer to the day-to-day action. So, I mean, that, so that being said, I don't know, I mean, if, if, if Dr. Banante has reviewed all the candidates, screened it down to five, had the administrative, the administrators, faculty-staff, and parents interview, provide him with feedback, and then he takes his much more extensive expertise about what it means to be a PPS director than I certainly have, then, at that point, I actually, I probably would be comfortable not, not meeting that person, but I don't want to, I do understand that members of the community may expect us to have greater familiarity with those individuals, and so...
And I think that community standard's important, and I don't want to overlook that, and that's what I'm leaning on you for, and that's why we're talking about it. Personally, I see it as my responsibility to bring good candidates before you, and to make recommendations, good recommendations to the board to act upon, and then if you weren't satisfied with the individuals who I was recommending for employment in the school district, you would evaluate me based on such, and you would be providing me with that feedback. So, that's just personally how I've looked at it, but I've also worked as part of a very large system, kind of, not...
Right, not LAUSD.
Not LAUSD, but, but a big system, and that, you know, and I want to be respectful of your time as well, so, all of those things are coming into play, which is why I just wanted, you know, Laura and I felt it was good to discuss and get your perspective on this, and I will go either way, and be perfectly fine in making a recommendation to you without you being a part of the process, and if you want to be a part of the process, I would recommend, and it sounds like we're in agreement, it should be for the finalists, and giving you, and having the opportunity for the board to provide input on the last couple of candidates. And ideally, they're both outstanding candidates, and it's a really hard decision to make, but we'll see.
What if we, what if we struck a compromise in a way, and so that the board is not involved, as I think we've all established, in the smaller, the committees of the five or six? But what if, once you decided, out of those five or six, you pick your top person, and you let the top person be interviewed by the board, almost just as a nod of, I don't know, a final nod of approval from us before we actually approve them at the meeting?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So that we don't have to see the top two or three and be really involved in your decision-making process? You can make the decision, but the board can get a chance to, you can almost look at it as an intimate way to get to know the person before we actually approve them.
Yeah, like with...
And then if there was any red flags, if any of us were like, "Oh my gosh, Dr. Banante's crazy, let's see those other top two," you know?
Right.
Which of course wouldn't happen, but...
I think it's unfortunate, although you got to meet Nabil tonight, but I certainly, you know, upon reflection, realized it would have been great for you to have an opportunity, have had an opportunity to meet Nabil before you were acting on his appointment, whether it been informally or formally, whatever that may be. So, I'm comfortable with whatever, I'm trying to, again, there's a place of, it's also coming out of a place of respect for your schedules, you know, you're all very busy, traveling, working, whatever that may be, so I'm just trying to be mindful of that as we go forward as well.
I actually, I like Jen's recommendation, and I was, mostly because it is, the administrator roles are so important, the board does, I mean, we, it is our job and objective to trust and respect the recommendations of the superintendent, and yet at the same time, whether it was the most recent hire, or this upcoming hire, or another principal, it does feel weird to me at this point, having been on the board, to vote on an administrator not having met the person.
Understood.
That's fair.
I agree, and this, having just done this at work with an agency who's hiring a person to work on our account and work basically for me, but not work for me, that's exactly the process. They had a finalist, she came before me, she's great, I have no concept of what actually needs to be done, in the data, roughly, but I couldn't describe that and hire on those capabilities, but I can hire on whether she's a fit.
Right.
And I think that that's the, and we trust, we hired you because we have a sense that you know what the community is interested in, and so we would expect that to flow through you, however, at that last little, like, is it, is there, does fit work?
Sure.
That's the only thing I would feel competent of, like, making a call on.
I think that's a good compromise, because I think that's kind of...
Well, he got there eventually, right?
Right. So, I think we all...
Well, I had to work through the whole thing, I mean, I couldn't, I mean, I know you sent this to us in advance, but I...
No, it's talking out loud.
You did a much better job than Laura and I did in my office last Friday.
I did have to think through it.
Another part that I was thinking of was that, you know, one of the boards, or maybe the most important job we have is to hire a superintendent.
Right, right.
And that we go through that process together, the whole process, and not all of us, maybe some of us hire people in our, in our days, and maybe some of us don't, and it's actually really important stamina-building and learning experience to understand the interviewing process of a principal, so that it prepares you in a way to hire a superintendent.
Oh, that's a good point.
I feel like those experiences that we've all, you know, some of us have had more than others, of hiring a principal and going through that committee process and talking it through, that actually helped us be able to manage the superintendent hiring process better. So I think it's kind of all part of the big picture of our job, I think it helps with the whole responsibility.
Well, I look forward, so ideally, in the next couple of weeks, we'll work to narrow the pool down to a finalist or finalists, and I look forward to setting up the structure for you to meet that individual or those individuals. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, without further ado, I'm sorry that we're keeping you... Okay, without further ado, I'm sorry that we're, uh, keeping you here. We can start our presentation, is it, are we using?
Benadia?
No. There's no presentation. Oh, okay.
Oh, she's. There's a little look of panic on her face.
So my name is Kylene Fitzick and I am the external auditor with the Bonadillo Group and was the senior on ear engagement. We recently completed the audit and went over the results in detail with your audit committee. I'm here tonight just to go over a summarized version of the audit results and answer any questions that you may have. First and foremost, I would like to mention, we thank your staff and management for all their assistance during the audits. They were very responsive to our requests and very well-prepared as usual. So there were three deliverables that were, that we provided to you. The first is your audit of the financial statements. The second is your audit of the cla- extra classroom financial statements. And then lastly, the required communications letter. So first, the school district's annual audit of the financial statements includes two reports from our firm. One being the independent auditor's, auditor's opinion on the financial statements. We issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. And just to note, an unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance that an auditor can give you. The other report that is included in your basic financial statements is the government auditing standards reports. This report basically requires to gain an understanding on your internal controls over financial reporting. And say these are four if controls were not in place or not operating effectively could lead to a material misstatement in your financial statements. We noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the financial reporting over internal controls. The second part of that report is your compliance with laws, regulations and grant contracts that non-compliance could lead to a material misstatement in the financial statements. And we noted no material non-compliance for those requirements. Next, for the next deliverable, we issued the school district's annual audit of the extra classroom financial statements. You are required each year to have a separate audit of the clubs, the extra classroom funds. It is under the cash basis, so basically there are no receivables, no payables, it's cash in, cash out and the remaining balances. We issued a qualified opinion on that financial statement. As we did discuss with the audit committee, it is very standard that you have this opinion. Most of the school districts that we audit have the same exact opinion. Um, it is a completeness modification in regards to the cash that is, that is, it's before it's received by the central treasurer. And then moving on, lastly, to the required communications letter. There's, it states in there that there was one significant new accounting policy and that was GASB seventy-five, which was bigger impact on the financial statements. The government accounting standards board is a rule-setting body that all governments must follow. They changed the rules and GASB seventy-five replaced GASB forty-five. So OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, is now recognized in the statement of net position. In years past, GASB forty-five allowed the past service cost to be amortized over thirty years, so only a portion of that was picked up. Um, so the actuarial methods and the discount rate were tightened up a tad. So before, there was a wider variety of methods and discount rates used and now there's not as many options to be, to be used, so that's basically the gist of GASB seventy-five. So that's a very high-level review of your audit results and now I'm open to any questions that any of you may have.
Any questions?
No questions.
We're very pleased. Thank you for your work.
You're good.
And thank you, Ms. Dino, for all of your efforts.
Hands on a great job.
And I'd like to also recognize Mr. Tom Campenile. He puts forth a great deal of effort in running, um, basically our audit committee. So we do wanna thank you and appreciate all of your efforts and hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kylene, you're welcome to stay for reports and cake, but I know you have a long drive, so, so don't feel bad if you want to go.
Well, thank you.
And thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Buildings and Grounds update.
Right, so Ms. Dino, I know you were setting up for this, so what do you recommend? Obviously, I move, Laura moves, Jen.
Maybe some of the delights.
No, that's why I just get a single one?
Is that?
I'm gonna grab the mic.
This is just supposed to work. There it is, it's okay. Okay, it worked, yay.
Share a mic, Ms. Dino?
Sure.
I don't know how you feel about this. Yeah, we'll work through it. So, as Ann and I were going through minutes from last year's Buildings and Grounds Committee um, and the status of some projects or proposals related to it, uh, we spent a lot of time rethinking, um, and processing how we could structure potential, uh, potential referendum this year for the school to receive what I would say is necessary capital to complete projects that are widely acknowledged and accepted as needing to be done. And, uh, so we spent some time on that before the B and G, the first B and G committee meeting. Uh, and we brought some ideas towards the, to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Uh, and we wanna provide you an overview of how our current thinking as it relates to that work um, and also what that process may look like, um, at this moment in time, recognizing that it may change and evolve, uh, between now and the end of the school year. At the same time, so that's part one. Part two is we also had, uh, some thoughts, uh, related to the structure of the operations and, uh, maintenance department uh, that we wanna propose to the board, uh, which I think had been discussed, um, over time. Uh, but we wanna now work towards, uh, action on those. Uh, and then there was a question, um, some districts locally, uh, so that's part two, sorry. Um, and then there was a question, uh, regarding, uh, geothermal. Uh, some districts are pursuing geothermal options, uh, in the area. Um, and, uh, we had done some work with this as a school system probably eight or nine years ago. Uh, so we wanted to, in investigating a geothermal, uh, system and its potential, uh, use on campus here. And we wanted to, uh, just provide a board with a, a very broad summary of what the findings were from that study. Uh, that's the third and final part. Uh, so with that, we'll dive in. So, you're probably familiar with, uh, a, a working spreadsheet that has been passed around, certainly the Buildings and Grounds Committee was, uh, with respect to projects that need to be done on campus. And then we've pulled a few of those off the spreadsheet and we're presenting them here, uh, for your view and for the public's view. And just as an aside, this, uh, PowerPoint will be included, um, as a document in Board Docs, so Cecilia, if you're not picking this up well, uh, folks can, and folks are watching at home, they should be able to pick it up and, uh, just look at the PowerPoint, um, on their computer. And we've broken this up into four broad categories. Uh, the, uh, I'll highlight the one that kind of rises above the others, the capital repair reserve, because we've, we've spent some time already this summer talking about the capital repair reserve, establishing the reserve account and going over the amount of funds that were available in it. And we also discussed, uh, the likely projects that we would seek to complete through the use of the capital repair reserve funds, um, not many of which, or several of which had to do with the cafeteria, um, on the other, uh, side of the wall. Um, so, um, that one seems to be the most established, we're in the best position to complete that work, requires a public hearing, uh, once we decide, uh, what work we wanna, uh, complete. And, uh, um, very likely, we could move beyond those projects this year, or at least initiate the process, uh, for those projects this year. We broke up the other, uh, projects into two big categories, the one under the yellow on the left and the one under the green on the right. Uh, what we would say fits well within a proposed referendum, a bond, uh, and what may be eligible for an energy performance contract at this moment in time. Because several of the, uh, projects very well may fall under the umbrella of where, those that can be addressed through an EPC. Um, and through an EPC, you realize some savings, um, and, uh, um, in organizing a, a project in that way. So we felt we should at least con- uh, submit that to the architect, uh, to determine whether or not we have projects that may be eligible for an EPC. We don't know yet, um, that these items that are listed under the EPC, whether or not they're viable for an EPC or not. So if they're not, uh, if they are, great, we'll talk about an EPC and we'll, we'll bring that forward to the board. If they're not, we will bring these projects over to a proposed referendum. Um, so a different way of funding the project to be done. And then there's a series of projects under the blue here for future consideration that we're, we're hitting the pa- we're recommending to hit the pause button on. Um, that there would be much more study that needs to be done, uh, much more significant impact on our campus uh, and, um, much more discussion that would have to occur among our community members really to, to determine whether or not there's support for such a thing or not um, at this moment in time. So our recommendation is that we consider, uh, these projects that are kind of raised to a higher level, if you will, on this chart, the yellow, uh, the peach slash melba one and the green one, uh, right now. Um, and try to work through securing, uh, bond referendum or an EPC, uh, to complete those projects or begin the process for completing those projects this school year, while we hold off for future consideration, the projects that are listed under the blue. Um, so we brought this to the Buildings and Grounds Committee and I would say generally, the Buildings and Grounds Committee was supportive of this approach, especially in recognition that, uh, the future consideration ones need more discussion, um, and consideration before we proceed.
So can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
The, um, previous spreadsheet that we were all living with for a couple of years, um, it had a lot more items. Are those items either completed, so they're no longer on the sheet, or kind of consolidated into these windows?
Yes, most of, of these items were all in that top por- portion of the spreadsheet. And just to give it a different perspective, um, we took the items on the list and put it into, uh, buckets of funding sources.
Mm-hmm.
To try to group them together that way. And what rolled off of the, of the spreadsheet, which was probably a third of it, was completed items.
Okay.
And also items that are just done, um, through the regular budget.
Budget, right.
Just maintenance.
Yep.
Projects that are typically done anyway. So just to, uh, clean it up a bit and organize it better.
Yeah, good.
Now, um, and just to set Ann up, cause she's gonna take the majority of the rest of this presentation, one thing we're, we're trying to be mindful of is that the district has debt service, so we have debt, uh, that we're paying off, but we pay off a portion of that debt each year. Um, so we're trying to structure these projects in a way, or the scope of this project in a way, for when we, um, initiate, uh, the bond anticipation note for the project, that that new debt is coming on when an equal amount of debt is coming off. Um, and as well, if you were able to get into a cycle of doing things this way, you can begin, you know, to continue to make, uh, good repairs and updates to your, uh, campus and to your buildings with incurring very little, or with taxpayers incurring very little additional tax burden for the scope of the project, as long as you're timing it correctly. Um, so Ann can talk a little bit more about that, answer questions on it, and then we'll move into the other items that we have. So that's kinda an operating, uh, uh, principle we're trying to, uh, act under right now. Putting debt on that is equal or close to equal to the amount of debt that's coming off, so there's zero tax impact when it comes time to, um, present it to the community.
Okay, so, um, our next, uh, debt that is, uh, falling off of our debt service schedule are the Series two thousand nine bonds, which were our roof bonds when we had the, the new roof put on. They're going to be paid off in twenty twenty-four. Um, so in order to smooth out our debt service and not show spikes in that, um, in the expenditure portion of the budget, um, we would wait until, ideally, until that debt fall, fell off in twenty twenty-four. So, to take advantage of, um, another debt instrument would be bond anticipation notes that we can, um, renew for up to five years. So we're all familiar with those because that's what we use to, to buy buses with. We're always talking about a new ban every year, that as the old bond anticipation notes get paid off, we have new ones and that keeps our debt service smooth. But of course, you know, five years is a long way to predict interest rates. So we'll monitor the market, there's a fiscal advisor that I work with and we monitor the market each year at the time of renewal to determine if we should go into bonding or if we should renew the ban again, that which is our best option. If it did come to that interest rates were really going up and we would have to bond before twenty twenty-four, you might see a jump in the expenditure portion of the debt service part of the budget. Maybe not as much because we won't be incurring ban expenditures. There are expenses that are linked to renewing a ban every year. So every year, we just really need to look and weigh, um, which avenue we wanna go with. This is an ideal situation, is that we could renew a ban for five years and still take advantage of lower interest rates, when our, our two thousand nine bonds roll off of the schedule.
And Ann, just for the lay community member who may be watching at home, issuing a bond anticipation note for five years does not mean the project is, we have to wait for five years to come, to start the project.
No, it's just a short-term, uh, loan that's good for one year and you pay off a portion of it and renew the portion that you don't pay off. You might add to it, like we did with the buses, a portion falls off, we add another and we keep it rolling.
Just a question on that, so is the, the ideal situation is to, maybe I'm jumping the gun. Is the ideal situation to wait until twenty twenty-four to do the bond? Or is the ideal situation to issue bans in anticipation of it? So why does that, do we have other debt that's coming off that we would replace with a ban? The payment on a ban, or am I not understanding the right way?
There are, uh, bans are not as expensive to issue.
Okay.
And the interest rate would not be as high and we wouldn't be paying off a large amount of principal with a bond anticipation note. It's a short-term interest, or it's a short-term, uh, debt instrument.
Yeah.
Bonding is more expensive and then each year, you're paying off a larger amount of principal and interest.
Okay.
But what we also have to keep in mind too is, when the project is done and the final expenditure report is submitted to the state, the following year, our building aid goes up.
Right.
So that also balances out.
Got it.
To make it, to make it a smooth debt service transition.
So you issue bans temporarily, whenever, suppose we start this next year, which is, suppose we start this, you issue bans, which are cheap. We have a bunch of available debt coming available in twenty twenty-four. At which point, whatever we have left over, we issue a bond to it.
Correct.
And the transaction cost is higher and you're also paying more off every year?
Right, cause you're, you're starting to pay a larger amount of principal.
Okay, got it, thank you.
And I, what, if and when it comes this time to present this to, to the board and also to the community, we would illustrate exactly what this looks like, um, you know, through whatever chart.
Graphs and charts and numbers.
Graphs and charts, visual.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just procedural question, if you go out with, for a vote, do you vote on a ban or do you vote on a bond or do you vote on both or neither?
Y- you, you vote on borrowing.
Okay, so through either instrument?
Correct.
Fine.
So we're at a point where we're waiting, uh, the results of the EPC analysis from the architect. And as I mentioned, that may shift those EPC-related items into a potential bond referendum side of it. Um, and it's just a way of structuring the cost, um, for the school system. At that point, we'll reevaluate those project categories. At that point, we'll reevaluate those project categories to see what can go in, which side of this. The architect will coordinate obtaining cost estimates for the scope of the work. We'll bring this back to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Ideally, this is all information we attain in the next couple of weeks to bring to the next Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, and then we'll work on proposing a project scope at that point. That's part one. So any other questions related to that work?
I feel like I need to say this, or else my wife wouldn't let me back in the door. I feel like we have a lovely building in the main building. Is there other than the energy, do we know that there's an energy benefit of putting in a drop ceiling in the main building? Or are there other benefits of it? Because I noticed that was on the EPC side.
Do you want me to speak?
Sure, it's either you or Nabeel, so.
The, that could easily come off of the list. The drop ceiling was entered onto this list when we were talking about the famous pipes.
Got it.
So if the pipes were there, hanging out above our head, we were going to cover it with a drop ceiling. And we were trying to look on the bright side, that this drop ceiling could contain some energy savings.
Yeah.
You know, because there's not going to be a lot of lost heat.
Right.
You know, that's.
Got it. Thank you.
That's on the table.
Can I just move it?
Okay. So now I'd like to talk about the operations and maintenance and transportation reorganization plan. Recall that during the 1718 school year, we talked about reorganizing the department. You know, needs have changed, and in the past year and in the upcoming year, there are several retirements in that department, and, close together, so it's always a good opportunity, when there's a lot of change like that, to examine the needs of the department. Because we've had the same positions and the same structure for many, many years. We are seeing some areas of the department where we need a new idea, where, you know, we're not getting part-time bus drivers like we used to. The applicants just aren't there, and we're pulling a lot of full-time people in the maintenance department and in the cleaning department to cover bus runs, and that has a domino effect on the rest of the department. Do you want me to continue on with this? Okay. So this is our current structure for the operations side of the, of the district. What I want to focus on more is, in the lower left, we have our Director of Facilities and all of our maintenance staff, all of our cleaners, including cleaner drivers, our dispatcher, our mechanic, and then our full-time and part-time bus drivers, all report to one person directly. So that person is fielding a lot of day-to-day operation questions and planning and, you know, just operations of every day. And it's very hard to address the bigger picture. It used to be a lot different from, even before I got here. There was clerical support for the Director of Facilities, there was, when that person retired, it was over 15 years ago, they weren't replaced, but that position was split. There was a Director of Transportation and a Director of Facilities. Then it was merged again somewhere along the way, and it just, the bottom part of it just kept growing with one person in charge. So before I go on, do you want to say anything?
Nope.
Okay. So the proposed structure here has the Director of Facilities with some clerical support. The dispatcher separates out from being in the same category as the drivers, looking to the director for all of the day-to-day operations. Alisa is our dispatcher, she does a great job. She has really, over the past year, when we had that interim setup, had taken on more responsibilities as far as communication with parents. She rides the bus to see what needs, if there's any, anybody being unruly on the bus, that she can figure out a better way to help the drivers deal with that. She talks to the parents, and she's more, more time with managing the drivers. I'd like to keep that in place. So then underneath the Director of Facilities, we're proposing a supervisor position that will be a direct supervisor for the maintenance workers, the maintenance mechanic, the bus mechanic, the cleaners, and the cleaner drivers. So anything that's in red are the proposed changes. What I want to point out, there's a couple of things here, and I think I'm going to go on to the next slide, but if you keep this up, it's up to you on what slide you want to look at. But I want to describe the benefits of these new positions, and also why some of them are just needed temporarily. So the new job titles that we think are going to increase the effectiveness are the supervisor of the maintenance and the cleaning, which as I pointed out, you know, you're not going to have every individual and, you know, working out schedules and ordering going directly to the Director of Facilities, especially with, that we want to address some of these capital issues. Those day-to-day items just really need to be taken away. I see such a huge need for clerical support in that department. The Director of Facilities is typing in his own purchase orders, logging in electric bills, doing spreadsheets. Any of those clerical tasks is also on our Director of Facilities, and the effectiveness is really reduced in that department. I already talked about the dispatcher. We've had several cleaner drivers that have retired. Last year, I know that the board was supportive of replacing the cleaner driver with a maintenance helper driver, which is more versatile as far as the duties that that person can do. During the day, there's not a lot of cleaning that happens unless there's a spill or some, some other event that needs to be cleaned up. A maintenance helper can clean. The maintenance worker, that's not in their job description, I'm not going to get into too much of civil service and job descriptions, but a maintenance helper is a versatile position because they can do maintenance tasks, they can also clean, and they can drive. We still have our cleaners for night, which is when a bulk of our cleaning is done. I'm thinking that the, what I wanted to bring to your attention, too, is the assistant mechanic. That's for a half of a year, starting in January, ideally. Our only mechanic, who's been here for many, many years, Murray Prescott, he's retiring in July of next year. And he's our only mechanic, he can't just leave, and we can't expect someone to come in and learn it all and know what he's doing. So we're proposing that we have an assistant mechanic for half a year to shadow Murray in the garage. He tells me he's not going anywhere, he's still going to be around, he wants to drive, be a sub-driver, which is terrific, but we need somebody there every day to learn. Murray, if you remember, you know, we always celebrate when our Department of Transportation inspections come, we're always in the high 90s. And that really says a lot to Murray and the way that he operates that garage, and I would really like him to be able to teach the next person. So not on the presentation, but as an attachment, is this detailed plan that shows what's in the budget, the proposed reorganization, and even projected into 1920, that this is a budget-neutral plan because of the people that are retiring, the positions that are unfilled, these new positions. This is a separate, this isn't up on the presentation, it was too much on one page to digest, but you can look at that and to see that there's really not much of a difference. And I think that's it, yeah. So that's it for the, the description of the operations and maintenance and transportation reorganization plan.
So my memory is that there are currently positions like a head cleaner, right? There are some, that this group, this, that the, that there have been folks in some of these levels, but it seems to me that what you're wanting to do, for example, with the supervisor and with the dispatcher, is taking, maybe not the specific, with Alisa, it's the specific person, but definitely sort of taking some of the concepts that have been in play a little bit, but making them just much more explicit, in an effort to make sure that the Director of Facilities, with the many responsibilities that he has and will have, can, can, can focus his attention on those issues. I mean, it seems to me, right, that some of this has been in place, but it's really operationalizing it a little bit more, or am I not understanding that correctly?
You, you are understanding it correctly. We do have someone, Cheryl, who does, again, a wonderful job. She gets a stipend for to be the head cleaner, which is mostly scheduling and helping with that. She doesn't have any authority over any maintenance.
Right, right.
Worker, helper, that, so that part of it is new. And she's also retiring next year.
Okay.
Okay. So planning for these retirements, there's so many of them between last year and the upcoming year, there's, there's just some things to be reorganized.
Great. I really like, I really like this forward-thinking, really proactive thinking of bringing in an assistant mechanic, right, the person who we'd be hiring to take over Murray's position, but bringing them in to chat, to learn the ropes. I think that's so smart. You've, I mean, as long as I've been on the board, you've spoken just so highly of, you know, what he's been able to accomplish for the district, and so I, that makes a lot of sense to me.
He will be greatly missed.
I can tell.
He really will. He'll be greatly missed, and I just know that, there's, there's just a lot of things. Foremost is the safety of our school buses.
Right.
You know, that goes without saying, but I have to say that. Second, we don't have a huge fleet, we have a couple of spares. So if our buses start going down, we're in a really bad situation as far as just being able to get bus runs and sports trips and any of the other trips that need to be covered.
Anne, and I feel like we've talked about this before, but in the spirit of reorganization, can you just talk through the pros or cons of going with a, hiring a school bus company? I don't know, it's contracting with a school bus company to, that some other schools do, that, you know, they don't, they don't hire their own drivers, they contract with a company and they provide the buses and the drivers, and they do the whole shebang kind of off-site, and we pay a fee for that. Can you talk a little bit about why we're not, or if we should look at that, or why we're not looking at that?
There are a couple of reasons. One is contractual. Our labor contract prohibits us from contracting out anything that would cause the loss of jobs, first of all. Okay. Second.
Enough said.
Okay. Second of all, if we think about the big picture, if we sell all our buses and contract out our transportation, and in the event we're dissatisfied and we want to get that back again, the expense of buying an entire fleet of buses would, I don't even want to think about that, right?
I mean, I also think, I mean, because transportation is such an important part of our children's sort of safe and healthy experience, getting to and from school, I assume it goes without saying, as long as we hire the bus drivers and, and we maintain the buses, we have control over who's the bus driver, who's the bus maintenance person. I mean, it also, I mean, the first point about jobs and jobs that are in the community, that's a super important one, but the safety issue seems really big, obviously, as well.
Yes.
Thanks.
Are these all civil service titles that we have access to?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, they are.
And so you're looking at, to doing this ASAP? Is that, is that what the projected plan is?
Yeah, assuming we have the board's support. So we're right now looking for your support with the plan, and then yes, if we have, if we hear that tonight, then we'd like to begin the process as soon as we can. So.
Yeah. You have my support. I think that Anne's been talking about it for years. This is not a surprise that we need some restructuring in this department. It seems very thought out, and the fact that it's cost-neutral is like, well, no-brainer.
No-brainer.
Welcome, Nabeel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll transition to the last part here, which is, which is just an update on, I shouldn't say an update, a re-review, I don't know, of the geothermal study that was done back in 2009. Anne?
Yes. So in 2009, when we had our, our, both boilers were failing, we had one that wasn't great and our backup was worse. So we were talking about buying two new oil burners, which were very, very expensive. At the time, we did have some people that wanted us to explore geothermal. And we had a whole heating feasibility study done in 2009, which was quite extensive, and it compared steam boilers, the hot water system, and geothermal, and gas was in there as well, but we don't have gas service in this area, so, you know, we can not even have to talk about that anymore. The payback period, oh, and then, let me back up. While we're talking about buying, buying the new boilers or geothermal study, we started talking about an energy performance contract, and low and behold, we were able to get two new hot water boilers as part of the energy performance contract, so it had no impact on the taxes. The geothermal pump scheme, as it was called, there was too much of a payback period to have it qualify to be an energy performance contract item. So it was determined that, well, we're going to go with the two hot water boilers, tax-neutral as part of an energy performance contract, because it was really not feasible, it was, it was way out of our reach for being able to afford the geothermal system at that time. And that was in 2009. But the boilers are still very young as far as these boilers go, they're, at least have a 30-year age projection on them. So that's where we were with geothermal. We did really extensively explore it, which I think was always a good thing. We have to look back and say, you know, it delayed us a whole year, and we were worried that our boilers... that our boilers were going to fail and what was going to be our backup plan, but if we hadn't done the heating feasibility study, we may have ended up paying for those boilers instead of having it be part of an energy performance contract. So really, there was a bit of a silver lining there. Thank you for that update.
Sure. Any other questions? Good.
Do you have a sense whether geothermal would still have a, too long of a payback to be in an EPC now?
I don't know.
Okay.
I think one point you made this afternoon as we were talking about this was that something we should consider, though, in potentially it not, maybe it is viable, but that was, it would replace something that we're still paying for?
Yeah.
So, right. So, that would be offset by some, I would assume, some, you know, cost of fuel oil, but that would be a thing.
Well, and also frankly, quite wasteful, right? To take two perfectly good boilers that are, you know, that, you know, resources went into making them and buying them, I mean, it's not ecologically, I'm not an environmental expert, but I would assume it's not ecologically sound, to take perfectly good, functioning, large apparatus, you know, and getting rid of them, because there's something that else.
Right, we're still going to have to pay.
And we'd still have to be paying for them.
We'd still have to pay for them for the next 12 years.
Yep.
There's not a secondary market.
Building a really big house.
Hot water and fire furnaces.
Question.
Okay. All right.
Tom may have heard me, I leaned over to Margaret and I said, "Oh, I hope Tom doesn't feel like he needs to stay for this." But it was a good insight.
He does have correspondence, put it out.
Maybe we should move you up, you're farther down in the agenda, your letter that was provided to us, we just have to give our okay, and you're welcome to stay or not stay. Again, we do appreciate all your efforts and-
I'm not sure why you're assuming Tom wants to leave. He's enjoying our meeting.
That's what I said.
I'm sure Tom has had a full day's work.
We'll go on my soapbox and say, "When you're looking at STEM, we need more accountants and more actuaries." A lot of people it takes to come up with that number.
Sure. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, information reports, we'll start with you, Andrew.
All right, so I was asked to meet with the people who are on the peer mentoring team, which meets every Friday down here, to discuss what they're doing and what they plan on doing for the next couple months, and I'm on that, so I didn't have to meet with anyone. And so, for the next couple weeks, things that we talked about in peer mentoring are notably Red Ribbon Week, which starts on October 22nd, including, you know, themes like, Monday, kick off Red Ribbon Week by wearing red, Thursday, team up to be drug-free, wear sports team gear, so things like that to encourage students to participate, but the most important one is Wednesday, which the theme is, "It's no sweat to be drug-free," but in addition to just wearing sweatpants, we're asking students to bring in deodorant, shampoo, soap, and other things which will be donated to either St. Christopher's Inn or to the Walter-Hoving Home, both of which are drug rehabilitation centers and garrison. Additionally, Ms. Sniffin has worked to get a guest speaker to come in, so on November 14th, we will have Courtney Lovell, Lovell, Lovell come in, who is widely regarded as one of the nation's top leaders in recovery coaching. She is a long-term, she is in long-term recovery from heroin addiction and is on an international circuit, so she will be coming on November 14th for the high school, and then later that evening for the parents and community. And finally, one big idea we've had in peer mentoring that we've been trying to discuss is this middle school leadership program that we've been trying to brainstorm, and nothing's final, but as of now, we hope to periodically check in with teachers throughout the middle school to find out which students are acting as great role models in their community, and then we'll compile a name, compile a list of all the names, which will result in a student of the month title being announced by the high schoolers to the middle school, and our hope for this is that if students in the middle school can see high schoolers not only acting as role models, but also trying to motivate middle schoolers themselves to be good role models in their peer groups, it can create a better environment for both learning and socialization.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Very much. Mr. Wallach?
Good evening, everybody, I just want to take just a couple of minutes of your time and illuminate a little bit more some of the things that were presented to you in the written report that I submitted. You know, we are here in the village of Cold Spring, and they always say, "It takes a village." I want to talk about some of our events that we really incorporated some community partners to put together some good programs for our students. This past Friday, we had the Cold Spring Fire Department here, if anyone saw the blacktop on Friday morning, I think we had the largest fire truck that the Cold Spring Fire Department has, as well as a number of their officers and firefighters, and they presented two 45-minute programs, first one for our K-2 students, second one for our 3-5 students. We do fire safety every year, you can never hear it often enough, but it's really nice to be able to incorporate, you know, our local fire department, a community organization. They'd also just recently, just a few days before that, welcomed our kindergarteners who took a walk down Main Street to go visit them at the firehouse. Our kindergartners take a lot of walking trips in the community because we are located right here in the village. Another event that happened yesterday afternoon, we had a school-wide assembly, we had author and illustrator Danielle Sau-Mieri here, and his presentation was really put together, paid for by Split Rock Books, which is a new business bookstore in town. He was here visiting the Garrison School in the morning, I believe Garrison paid to have him visit, and the deal was if we sold a certain number of copies of his autographed book, which was not a hard sell to our families, we could have him here for an assembly in the afternoon. And we gathered all the students in the auditorium, and it was, you know, great having a real author and illustrator professionally published here, someone who, you know, it would have cost us a decent amount of money to bring him in, but through a partnership with a community business, we were able to get him here for free. And again, so it's just something nice for our students, something a little extra, something a little out of the ordinary, but really that we involve all parts of our community, and we do that throughout the year, so I just wanted to mention those two things to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wallach, don't go away too quickly. Could you talk a little bit about the Teachers College-
Sure.
-Reading and Writing Project?
Um, that's an initiative that we have been looking at for some time, and obviously there's an expense associated with that. We're really trying to unify what we do in English Language Arts, both reading and writing, throughout the building. We have great things going on all over the place, but they don't necessarily flow from year to year, from grade to grade, the way we like. So by becoming a school in partnership with Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, we hope to provide some professional development to our teachers so that we can be unified K through 5, and possibly down the road, it can, you know, flow in through the middle school as well. Teachers College Reading and Writing Project is an internationally recognized organization, Lucy Cawkin started it, and, you know, wherever you go, you hear about them in education. We are going to have 10 days of professional development, we have two different professional developers provided to us through Teachers College, one person will be here for five full days working with our K through 2 teachers, another person will be here for five full days working with our 3 through 5 teachers. The way it's going to work logistically, most likely, is teachers will receive a half-day of time with this person at one time, so if one of them is here for one day, they'll meet with one grade in the morning and another grade in the afternoon, just logistically how we have to do it, so our teachers are also with our students, teaching as much as we can, too. But it's a great opportunity going forward, I'm certainly glad that the district was able to support this and be able to bring this program for our teachers that will obviously benefit our students greatly going forward.
And is it a 10-day, five days and five days, and then that's it? Is there follow-up? Do they do it the next year?
Well, that's for this, that's what we have, I believe, contracted with for this year.
Okay.
It's not meant to be a one-year program. I don't think, it's also not meant to be a forever program, in terms of being able to provide the support, because the teachers, as they hear the professional development over time, get quite good at it, and we really don't need to provide it every single year, but I think the hope is for definitely more than one year, as we look into it right now.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Dr. Silke.
Good evening. I just want to fill you in on the middle school improvement team's meeting today, so, and also ask for assistance, we are between two books for the community reads, so we're going to try to choose between Ghost by Jason Reynolds and Counting by Sevens by Holly Goldberg Sloan, so we hope to decide that by the next meeting. And some books that we've already considered include Dashner's Maze Runner, which when Andrew was talking about peer mentoring, one of the ways that we were thinking about reimagining peer mentoring is maybe with an eighth-grade book club that's run by the peer mentors, so we need to touch base on that.
Counting by Sevens is a really good book, I recommend that one.
All right, that's a high vote right there. So, and some other topics that came up were the discussion of screen time, and we're hoping in that same November 14th date for Family and Friends University, where you guys are going to get to see, the high schools are going to get to see Ms. Lovell, that the Communities That Care, Phillips Town Communities That Care will bring one breakout session about digital citizenship for parents at night, so Danielle Pack McCarthy was at the MCIT, and she confirmed that that was something that she would be working toward doing. We're increasingly concerned about the cumulative effect of screen time, especially as students are working on one-to-one devices during the day and then spending up to, you know, some studies say up to four to five hours a night on screens as well, so what does that look like? And then also, along with our SEL initiative, our Social Emotional Learning Initiative, to have universal character education delivery curriculum, we're thinking of the idea of having homeroom be universal, because right now, the way the middle school is structured, sixth grade has homeroom on a regular basis, and seventh and eighth grade, they do have homeroom, but it's taken out of their second period on Blue Day's time. So, one of the things that we began to explore today in the middle school improvement team is what would have to be done to even out homeroom so that there was some true homeroom time in seventh and eighth grade, and that homeroom time could be time for students to receive lesson, universal lessons on social emotional learning topics like ruler, and it could also be time for kids to just touch base and have a person to bond with their homeroom teacher as a person in the school that's their go-to person when there's, you know, events happening, or when they need help organizing, or when they need assistance of that nature. So that was something that we just began to explore as well.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. Sniffin?
I'll be brief and just thank our department chairs for a great nine, 10 parent night, everything you wish you knew before your child was a junior in high school. They talked a lot about course sequence, course prerequisites, we then had guest speakers come in and discuss the difference between the SATs and the ACTs, what are the benefits of SATs versus ACTs, taking a list at different colleges and their requirements. In addition, we had a guest speaker come in on the NC2A process and what it, the high school requirements in order to play a Division 1 or Division 2 sport, and then we also had somebody come in and discuss the ROTC program at the college level. So it was a great night, I want to thank Kristin Moscow for her help in organizing that, and again, all the department chairs. And it was, we had a lot of people in attendance, we had over, I would say, about 75 parents, which for us is great.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Song.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick announcements, I know it's hard to believe, but the fall season for our athletic programs are actually coming to an end. I sent that a blast last week, please register your child for family ID if they plan on participating in a winter varsity or JV sport, the window's open, the first day is November 5th, so you only have about two and a half weeks till we officially start, so just please register, make sure you have an up-to-date physical. And then, another thing I mentioned in my board report, I just wanted to, again, congratulate our student athletes for being rewarded as a school of excellence last year for the 2017, 2018 school year. Once again, what that means is that 75% of our varsity teams were scholar-athlete teams by the state, and I was lucky enough to attend an athletic director's workshop by the state, and we're only one of seven schools in Section 1, which is about 82 schools, so it's a pretty prestigious honor. And we're only two teams away from being a school of distinction, which means 100% of your teams are scholar-athlete teams, so we're right there, so hopefully our students are home studying right now, so we'll be a school of distinction this year, but it's a tremendous honor, I'm extremely proud of our student athletes and our coaches, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. We're not going to put you on the spot this evening for a report that you've been here only two weeks.
Next time.
But next time. Thank you. Any communication from the dwindling public? No, not this time? And not go through the break?
No, we need to give them some refreshments to take on their way out.
Yeah. All right, we'll take a brief break. Thank you, thank you for the cake and the fruit and-
Enjoy your scarves as well.
Great, and the scarves, yes, thank you.
Did you do that?
Okay.
All your spare time.
Moving on, we left off at Item H, correspondence from Mr. Thomas Campanal, that's the audit committee letter, basically reiterating what the auditor told us, that we're in great shape, and we, the audit committee recommends accepting the audit, which is being presented Item I is the Consent Agenda Minutes, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Or any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent Agenda Financial, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent Agenda Personnel, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to unfinished business, Dr. Benante has now, I believe, finalized the list of the workshop topics-
Right.
...that we've changed a few things here and there. Are we good at this point with these items? Okay.
May I read the resolution?
Sure, thank you.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the topics as presented for their 2018, 2019 workshop meetings?
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is the CSC, CPSC recommendations, and the recommended action is be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the recommendations of the Committee of Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented?
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any communication from the public at this time? Okay, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, thank you.